All right, I'm gonna call the, what day is this? Wednesday, December 11th, 2024. Meeting of the Essex Junction City Council to order. Are there any agenda additions or changes? Amber, did you wanna?
I have one, and my camera is not working, so I'm just gonna keep trying to finagle with it. So my apologies, but I would ask that we move consent item 7F, which is the dog license fee memo, out of the consent agenda and put it on as business item 6D? D as in dog. Yep. Aye.
A number of people that want to offer comment tonight on a variety of topics, mostly tree farm. We're gonna limit comment to two minutes for those when that time comes. We have some things to do before that. That comment will take that comment in. We're not gonna answer questions. We're not gonna get into a Q and A or conversation about the topic. We'll take your comments and thoughts into consideration as we make a decision how we're gonna move forward. And we will get to that shortly. But right now, if there's anyone that has any comment or concerns to bring to the council on that topic or any other, now is the time to do that. Please raise your hand in the room or online, and we will recognize you. Not seeing anyone in the room. Not seeing anyone online. So we're gonna move on to 5A, public hearing for stormwater ordinance. This is our second public hearing. This public hearing will be a presentation, and we'll take comment specifically on the stormwater utility proposal. Again, repeating myself from earlier, this will be taking comment and opinion. We will not be getting into a discussion or a back and forth or a Q and A. We'll take the comments and thoughts, and we'll incorporate them into our plan as presented again in January when we revisit this as part of the development process.
All right.
Chelsea Mandago is here from...
Just one quick logistics. So if you can monitor anybody new coming into the meeting, that would be awesome.
I will do my best.
Thanks.
All right. Hi, everyone. So my name's Chelsea Mandago. I am the water quality superintendent for the city. I oversee the wastewater department as well as the stormwater department. So tonight's the second hearing. One important item to note right off the bat is the date is wrong on this presentation. It was because the first public hearing was November 13th, and so the month was changed, but not the date. So. Moving to the agenda. So today, we're gonna talk a little bit about stormwater management in the city and some of the history, what a stormwater utility is, how we are developing the fees, the credit manual associated for those fees, as well as the proposed changes to the ordinance and/or new portions of the ordinance that are part of the municipal code. So to start off, that's good. Oh, no, that is right. Why manage stormwater? So human development has disrupted the watershed balance, causing water to runoff of the landscape rather than infiltrate. And that stormwater runoff carries excess nutrients, sediment, and pollution into our waterways. In the Lake Champlain Basin, the nutrient of concern is phosphorus. That affects water quality and also causes toxic algae blooms. So stormwater management history. Stormwater management was established mainly through the Clean Water Act of 1972. That's also what established wastewater treatment facilities. So it created a permit that requires states to manage and reduce stormwater runoff to improve water quality. And those permits are called MS4 permits that are issued actually by the state of Vermont. It's a federal permit passed through the state. And MS4 stands for Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System. And then we also have the Lake Champlain Total Maximum Daily Load, which is a daily limit in the amount of phosphorus that you can put, that the EPA has determined you can put in the Lake Champlain watershed without affecting the water quality or having negative effects. So the state has been tasked from the federal government to try to meet that target that they have set by 2036 for the amount of phosphorus in the lake, entering the lake. So all of that is really, those two pillars are what make up mostly our MS4 permit. So we have to reduce the amount of stormwater runoff into our stormwater impaired streams, which in the city are Indian and Sunderland Brookes. But then we also have to work on this, the Lake Champlain TMDL is what we call it for short, to be part of the solution. So we need to create stormwater infiltration projects. And we're by 2036. And specifically for each municipality that is MS4, we have to reduce the amount of phosphorus into the lake by lake watershed by 25%. So the state is, or excuse me, the city is composed of two lake watersheds, Mallett's Bay and Main Lake. So overall, we're working four different watersheds here between the Brookes and the Lake Champlain, but they all end up in Lake Champlain. We also have the other issue of aging infrastructure in the city. Many of the pipes were installed over 30 years ago, and the material of choice then was corrugated metal, and that degrades over time. So we're starting to see a lot more collapsed pipes and sinkholes. So we're trying to preserve as many pipes as we can through slip lining, but some are gonna have to be replaced with larger plastic pipes that will last much longer. So what is a stormwater utility? A stormwater utility is funded through stormwater user fees. And so we cannot measure stormwater runoff off of your property like through a meter like we can water and sewer. So we have to measure it using total impervious area to assess how much of a burden you are putting on our stormwater infrastructure. And we'll talk about that in a moment. This isn't a new thing to Vermont. There are 12 communities that are considered MS4 communities, seven of which have already developed utilities. Two other communities besides ourselves are also working on forming utilities right now. So nearly all of us have created utilities because it is just a logical way to fund these requirements. So another reason why we're forming a stormwater utility is it provides a fair and stable source of funding. Currently, the stormwater management program is funded through the general fund based on property tax. Also, before we separated from the town of Essex, stormwater capital projects were funded through the town stormwater capital fund. Since separating, we've lost that dedicated source of funding for stormwater capital projects. So now we are ranked alongside the general fund projects, capital projects, which there's a lot of important projects in there, but don't have a deadline for implementation like we do with the stormwater projects. So how do we bill based on impervious area? So this picture is of a parcel in the city. The blue area is impervious, is what is considered impervious area. And technically, it's defined as a developed area of land that prevents or significantly impedes the infiltration of stormwater into the soil. And we call that unit of charge an equivalent residential unit. So we had a consultant look at all the parcels in the city, and they determined what the median amount of the impervious area for single-family residential parcels was in the city. And that's 2,823 square feet. Then for non-single-family residential parcels, it's based on the measured amount of impervious area. Here is a flow chart showing how we would determine your fee. So if you're a single-family residential unit, including duplexes and triplexes, you'd be assigned one equivalent unit. And we're gonna set that rate for what equivalent unit is as part of every budget year in the budget process. Right now, we're estimating around $72, but that's not set yet. And then that would be billed over the three-year utility bills that you already get for sewer and water use. So you get three bills a year, and so that 72 would be divided between those three. So about $24 per bill. For non-single-family residential parcels, it's the measured amount like I mentioned before. So to determine what, how many ERUs your property would have, you would take the measured amount of pervious surface, divide it by that, what we've designated as one ERU, so the 2,823, to get the number of units assigned to your parcel. And then you multiply that by whatever the rate is for the year. And so non-single-family residential parcels will be eligible for credits, and we'll talk about that in a minute. Here are a few examples of parcels in the city to demonstrate impervious area calculated, how many ERUs were issued or estimated, and then the annual fee. And the other important thing to note is that tax-exempt properties, that is another benefit of having utility, is that they will have to pay as well. So the credit manual. So the credit is gonna go to the fee that's assessed for your property. You, the application will be online, and you could submit it online or through the mail to me. Only non-single-family residential properties are eligible, like I mentioned. And right now, the credit cannot exceed 50% of the stormwater fee assessed for the property. But at a minimum, you're gonna get charged whatever one ERU rate is for the fiscal year. There are three categories to the credit manual. We have stormwater treatment practice. That's if you have stormwater treatment practices on your property. They must be operational and maintained. And the percentage of credit is based on specific treatment standards that are outlined in the Vermont Stormwater Management Manual, which is the manual that engineers use to design stormwater treatment practices in the state. But essentially, the better that the stormwater treatment practice infiltrates water or improves water quality, the higher credit you will get. There's also MS4 and TS4. So TS4 is VTранs. They also have a stormwater permit like we do. We, the percent of that credit is capped at 35%, and that was issued through state legislation, the limit there. And there's also an education credit, which is available to the school systems on top of a stormwater treatment practice if they can demonstrate they are teaching about water quality or stormwater management in their curriculum. We are gonna require a recertification for credits issued every two years to ensure that the stormwater infrastructure is still operational. And if that isn't submitted, then there's the potential for the credit to be revoked. So moving on to the ordinances. So this chapter 19 is an existing ordinance. This was established back in 2014 for, so the state issues new MS4 permits every five years and generally changes requirements in it and makes them more stringent. So we had to comply with one of the changes in the 2014 permit, or 2013 permit. This was done in conjunction with the town of Essex, so we didn't need to update it to reflect the city and reference our own documents as well as update permit statuses for properties that came into compliance through the addition of this chapter. A new chapter being proposed is the regulation of stormwater management. And this is really related to our MS4 permit. Most of, almost entirely, what is in this ordinance is already existing, the land development code, but it didn't really belong in the land development code because it wasn't related to development of parcels in the city. So we removed those sections and put into this chapter where it really belonged. So examples of that is prohibitions of what you cannot put into the storm sewer system, notifications of spills, inspection and enforcement rights, and operation and maintenance. Then the last chapter we're proposing is the regulation of stormwater utility. So this is what would establish the city's stormwater utility. And in it, it outlines everything involved with the utility from administration, procedures, assignment of the ERUs, the credits, the billing and collections, as well as forming the enterprise fund that will fund stormwater management. So what's next? So we're still receiving feedback from non-single-family parcel, residential parcels. This may result in recommended amendments to the proposed ordinances. We are considering reexamining some of the credit manual categories. We're gonna have another round of public hearings in January or February if we propose to change the ordinances or amend them in some way. We also need to still approve the ERU rate for this current fiscal year along with the ordinances, which will be in early 2025. We're gonna, the plan is to start collecting the stormwater fee for this current fiscal year in June 2025, but it's only gonna be a third of the fee. And then we're gonna set the next ERU rate for fiscal year 2026 as part of the city's enterprise budget fund planning process in the next four months. So with that, there's my contact information. If you have any further comments to provide, please feel free to reach out, or questions, please reach out.
So just to add, so we have received specific comments from so, from some folks. That includes CVE, the school district, and...
Autumn Pond.
Autumn Pond. And so you don't have this on your business agenda item for tonight. We're still just collecting public input. This will be back on your agenda, likely the first meeting in January, I think, subject to change, but likely the first meeting in January, where staff will come back forward to you, summarize the comments that we have received, and provide responses in terms of what we are recommending that we can adjust or not adjust, or how we shift the program. When we come back to you with that, if anything in the ordinances change as a result of that, that kicks in a second, a real second round. This is number two, but really second round of public hearings following that process.
Great. With that, is there anyone who has any comment on the stormwater utility? Sure, come up to the microphone here and just, I know who you are. But if you identify yourself for the...
Sure. Steve Eustace Wilkinson Drive. I had a great presentation, Chelsea. It makes sense to me. I had a question, which maybe you can't answer, but you can at least collect it. I was trying to understand for something like a condo where there's multiple properties, where you can calculate the ERUs for that based on the 28, 25, or whatever it was, the number. Do you then say divide that by the number of owners? And then once that division is, that can't be less than one ERU? Because like, for example, like on Brickyard, where I am, where I own on Sugar Tree Lane, there's 55 units, right? So, but there's the whole property. So like, are you gonna calculate that whole thing, divide by 55, and the answer for any individual utility person is at least one? Is that kinda how I read that? I didn't really have that example.
Did you want me to answer, or should we, are we collecting?
No, I think we'll just take that in. I think, or is the process, the condo association gets billed, and they work it out.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Because typically, the condo, we get our utility bills by person. It's not like an apartment building like Autumn Pond or something like that, where one person pays it all.
Yeah. Yeah. Good question. We'll get the answer.
Anyone else in the room have a question about this topic? Comment about this topic? Let me go to Zoom. Anyone on Zoom have a comment related to this public hearing on stormwater, stormwater utility? If so, please raise your hand. If you're having trouble, raise your hand, raising your hand, just unmute and say hello. I don't see anyone in the room. I don't see anyone on Zoom. So I will consider, public hearing closed at this point. Thank you, Steve, for that. And thank you, Chelsea, for the presentation.
Thank you, Chelsea. See you next time.
We have you out in record time. All right. Business item 5A, discussion, consideration, and management of the tree farm facility.
So you've got a memo in your packet. We are essentially at the end of year two of the three-year agreement with the tree farm management group for managing the tree farm. That is, agreement is both through a lease and a management agreement. The agreement requires that the agreement is reopened before the end of December 2024, really so that we're not coming to the very end of the three years of the contract without an idea of what's happening next. So that is why we're having this conversation tonight. The, we have spoken about this thus far in executive session, and so this is the first council conversation where this is open to public, so you can get input on it and decide where you wanna go next.
Great. Thank you. We've talked about a number of different scenarios in executive session. I'd be curious what folks are thinking. I think I don't mind kicking it off unless someone wants to go first. I think we've talked about this in the past. I think ultimately, as an end goal, bringing the property under municipal management would be my preference. The timeline of that is still an open question. I think there are excellent reasons why we should do that. I think improvements need to be made that, in infrastructure sense to the property, the tree farm has understandably pointed out shouldn't be part of their agreement. For instance, I think we need actual facilities there, restrooms, snack bars type facilities that are typically at a venue like this, for one. I think asking tree farm to take on capital with a lease situation isn't appropriate. I think ultimately, when this agreement was first signed, there wasn't a mechanism for the city to manage, I'll speak for the city only, to manage this from our rec department that was, I believe, under schools at that time. That has changed, and we don't typically have third parties managing parks and properties for us. I think it also becomes interesting when we're asking the entities that are renting from us to also set the rates. And the city rec department has a very successful history in running what we call enterprise funds or operations that are fee-based and service-based in an efficient and cost-effective way. So I'm not sure that's where we are now in terms of being able to do that. I'm curious what everyone else thinks on the topic, which is kinda why we're doing this. So, Marcus?
So I will simply say that I hear you. I totally understand, and I think there will be appropriate time for that. I currently, I currently believe that, based on the fact that I have some concerns, questions around current capacity within EJ, within EGRP, on top of the fact that I think we're still looking in the very near future at a process that will study our facilities, will take a look at what we do here in the city and evaluate it, and potentially, there will be some community engagement around that and some other efforts, much in the same way that we did the strategic planning for the city. It would really be very much focused on EGRP and what it currently has and manages. And I think that at this particular time, I am, so I am in the current support of extending the tree farm agreement. I hear your concerns about the need for some facilities on the, on the property. And, you know, I currently operate as a member of the board, but I have not had this conversation with other board members, so I'm only speaking for myself at the moment in the fact that I think that there is potential, I think that there is potential to, within an agreement, that the tree farm continue to manage this property on an extended lease with a caveat of building up either a capital fund or some mechanism by which we can help add to the amenities of that particular property, which will make it a much better experience for all of its users. So that's where I stand at the moment.
Excellent.
I'll echo Marcus's statement at this point.
Very nice and brief. Excellent.
So I know that EGRP has said that they have capacity to take on the management of the tree farm group, and I don't necessarily have any question about that. But what I am more concerned about is financial capacity of the city overall and taking on an enormous parcel of property with things that could go wrong and capital investments that have to be made. So I'm, I'm more, I agree with Marcus and Tim that perhaps extending the contract at this time is a better idea, but with intention of moving more rapidly towards transferring over to municipal management at the end of the next contract. And I also am just curious, I don't, we haven't really discussed this that much, but if we are leasing that parcel to a single entity and that single entity is the primary user of it, I think, and there are capital needs based on how heavily that property is used, I don't think it's unreasonable to ask people, tenants, to contribute towards capital. So I would want the agreement to have some sort of, for them to address capital needs by contributing to a potential capital fund or contributing to the conversation on the future of parks, buildings that relate to tree farm. So I think those would be my two requirements. And one last thing I would like to say is that, you know, in our notes, it says that the town of Essex Select Board already took action to offer a lease. And seeing as we both own the property, I think we might want to work together to coordinate those conversations better than we have in the past.
Yep.
So that we are not one behind the other or going in different directions.
Gotcha. Amber?
I agree with generally everything that has been said. I'm in favor of extending the lease with consideration of capital upgrades and with the goal of continuing to move towards municipal management.
So that brings up, I don't know that, so I'm going to consider this conversation, for me, opening the topic again by the end of December 2024. So I would suggest that at this point, we get together as a subcommittee or, I mean, not an official subcommittee, but reach out to the select board for further discussions, but not as two full boards to start initial discussions, perhaps with the two, with the leadership pairs. Because what we haven't done here yet, obviously, right, is talk to the select board about this. And as has been pointed out, we own it jointly. So unfortunately, that hasn't happened, and they made it a sort of, what feels like a hard decision. But I think it'd be a good idea to, to get together on the side and kind of see what we can, see where we're really at, see how we're feeling about this topic. Because I think this is an in-between that hasn't been suggested before. If we're talking about asking tree farm management group to add a capital fee to every unit that they rent, I'll call it a unit. I don't know if they do it, can't remember if they do it by the hour or the season, you know, whatever it is, there's a fee on top that's added for a capital fund that over time, over years, would build up so that those amenities could be built on the property. I think that makes sense, and I don't think, that's not something we've all talked about before. So I can't imagine how they'd feel about it, or that they've considered that. So that, I think right now, that would be my recommendation, that in January, we reach out to the, soon, we reach out to select board leadership or the manager in the town and try to get something scheduled. I don't know what people think about that. I'm generally in agreement. I think, I don't wanna get into the concept of what is an extended lease period time. I think let's figure out where we are with the town first, and then figure out, I think the term is a much longer-term conversation.
We definitely need better alignment between the two municipalities, one way or the other. So I, I'm in agreement.
I don't have that in front of me, but, and I know we're going to take comments, so I don't necessarily need to know right now, but. So yeah, we do need, we do need to offer guidance for staff in form of a motion later, but we'll get to that. Anything else before we turn to public comment? No? Okay. All right, so as I mentioned, I suppose we should have asked for people to sign up. I'm going to ask people to sort of use kindergarten rules and whoever, you know, approached the mic, take turns. We are going to keep this to two minutes. There are about 30 people online that I'm assuming are related to this, including the folks that are in here. So for all of us, if you agree with what's been said, come up, say, "I agree with what's been said." Good enough for us. We heard you. We are paying attention. We do understand this is an important topic, but we do have, we do have a lot to get through tonight. So we want to hear, hear what you have to say, just add to folks who came before you. So we'll start, we'll do a few in the room, we'll do a few online, we'll do a few in the room, go back and forth. Is there anyone that would like to start? Please come up to the microphone right here. And for folks who are going to speak, if you give us your first or last name and if it's, and where you live and for the minutes, it'd be great. Thanks. Where you live. Town, municipality.
My name is Marie Dano, and I am a City of Essex Junction resident, also a mother of two, and I have volunteered hundreds of hours to local soccer programs through Essex Rec and a local soccer club. If my family's not home in the spring or fall, we're likely at the Tree Farm for practice, a skills clinic, or a soccer game. The Tree Farm's an unique space in our community that provides quality space for soccer, football, ultimate frisbee, rugby, walking paths, and running trails. We're lucky to have such a space in our community to allow children and adults to foster their love and development of outdoor recreation and physical activity. Over the past several years, the Tree Farm Management Group has maintained the fields and surrounding area with dedication and a commitment to providing hours in surrounding communities with a beautiful facility. Tree Farm Management Group works hard to ensure that the tree, the field usage is available and fair amongst numerous clubs and rec programs, finding time to ensure that all programs can grow. They've established working relationships with neighboring property and business owners as well as CTE to maintain the property and find creative solutions to maintenance and improvements. As a nonprofit, the Tree Farm Management Group has managed to do all these operations at no expense to taxpayers since 2002. I ask, what value does the city council see if not offering a new lease to the Tree Farm Management Group? What do they see as the benefit of having the Tree Farm managed and controlled by the municipalities? What would be the impact to the taxpayers of our community? And at what cost would it be to programs that utilize the Tree Farm? As the City of Essex Junction is still in its infancy of being a new city and sorting out departments and programs that previously overlapped with the Town of Essex, it seems taking on a new venture such as the Tree Farm, a site that needs regular maintenance and requires a team to handle scheduling and oversight, would be a disservice to the other areas the city council still needs to focus on as a new city. I believe with various tax rises, raises to taxpayers already, taking on the potential, a potential program that would require taxpayer money would not be ideal. The Town of Essex Select Board has already voted five to zero to offer a new lease to the Tree Farm Management Group, and I encourage the city council to do the same. Thank you.
Well timed.
Yes, it's pretty close. It's pretty close.
Nice.
Who would like to go next? She did cover it well.
Hi, my name is Mike.
Give us your last name, Mike.
Last name is Nick. I live on Tyler Drive. I've been living in the Junction on the 20, maybe as long as the Tree Farm's been around. I'm also a rental. I've been renting from the Tree Farm. I run a couple soccer leagues. I've been renting for about eight years now. I'm also a member of the Tree Farm Board, so I'm relatively biased. That's fair to admit, fair to say. It seems to me that the big topic for you guys is a capital fund, raising capitals for capital improvements. I think it might be a good idea for the two municipalities and the board to work together to figure out how we can do that, what wants, what needs to be accomplished. We do have a slush fund. Maybe a capital raise matching program could be good. Whatever dollar we raise, both municipalities match that to accomplish shared goals. There's my idea.
Spreading that down.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Steve Eustace again, and from the city on Wilkinson Drive. And I think all the discussion is good. I think one of the things that is tricky, I think they've done an awesome job managing the fields, and they've got this parking and driveway and all these other issues they got to deal with that seem more municipal-oriented, like they want to focus on providing the recreation. And if we're going to get to municipal management at some point, how do we like transition? I think he just had a suggestion there, which was nice, but like, do we really, does it have to be a zero-sum game? Because I believe that's an opportunity lost, that the kind of, there's the additional facilities like Raj brought up, like a snack bar, bathrooms and all that. But I think just even like the parking, like the gravel, like just those like real basic road crew kind of things, like the town has a grader, why can't, you know, they go in and grate, you know, like those basic things. And even like, there are spots on the trails where the Crush Country tail that need gravel. I mean, we had a pretty dry fall till recently. I was there for a walk. It had rained once, and there were some pretty muddy areas, and they tend to get muddy. And putting some gravel on in spots and dips and stuff to help the drainage are all investments. They're, I don't consider them, you know, maintenance, you know, mowing and that kind of thing. That, the longer we put off that stuff, the more work that needs to get done in the end. Is there some transition as you're working through the lease that the municipality could do something? All things to consider, because I think there's so much potential on the site. I know a lot of the focus has been on the, on the soccer and all of the field sports, but I think on the whole property. And I don't think we want to ignore the rest of the property because we keep renewing the lease. Let's think about transition or simultaneously doing something while they have at least on some of those other improvements. Anyway.
Thank you. Gotcha. Just going to look at Zoom real quick, because there's probably folks waiting there. There is not. Anyone on Zoom that wants to offer a comment on the Tree Farm Management Group topic? Please raise your hand while we're waiting. Is there anyone else in the room? Hi.
Hi, I'm Ally Viall.
Sorry, Ally, one second. I just want to make a point, Raj, because somebody did put something in the chat. Just to be clear, the chat is not looked at as public record. So if you want to make a comment, please raise your hand so you can do that. Thanks. Sorry, Ally.
I'm Ally Viall. I'm a Town of Essex resident, and I am the resident member on the Tree Farm Management Group. Just an educational piece to Steve's point. The management group, in the last year and a half or so, has worked with O'Leary Burke to get a road assessment and survey done on not just patchwork and Band-Aids to keep it going, which as a management group, we have done and worked with the Town of Essex Public Works Department to, the, the management group has paid for material to go down. The town has graded it, so that has happened. But again, that work that we've had done has been a Band-Aid effect. And so a survey was done to sort of put us at a five-year plan of what that would look like to really correct the drainage so that you don't have those transitional puddles and really raise it up, but drain it correctly and do all the right things. And so, you know, the Tree Farm Management Group had a tough year.
Cory, could you mute, please? Thank you.
Had a tough year with rebuilding the front complex of fields. But in general, you know, like Mike said, we do have money at the end of the year on our good years, and in general, safety surfaces is a priority. So it's not just the playing fields, but it's also working with CTE and high school on the trails, and then also the roads and the tree trunk of the path. So just an educational piece on that, that the Tree Farm Management Group has worked on that.
Thank you. Everybody's so close. I'm just going to go online, because right after I said, "We'll, we'll wait," just bear with me. Mike Dimitrov? See your hand raised?
Hi, so my name's Mike Dimitrov. I live in Essex Town. For full disclosure, I am the president of the Board of Directors for Nordic Soccer Club. I would like to speak in favor of continuing to have the Tree Farm Management Group run the Tree Farm. I'm not having the municipalities take it over. I think it's worth noting that, you know, hundreds of volunteer hours go into the Tree Farm, and if the municipalities take it over, there will surely be taxpayer expense, considering the current, you know, Vermont tax environment. Surprised we'd even want to consider that. Capital improvements would be fantastic, you know, and as a resident of the town and as a user of the Tree Farm, I mean, I'd love to see the municipalities work with the Tree Farm Management Group to make capital improvements happen. I think it is worth noting, you know, that as a user of the, the Tree Farm via Nordic, user, your fees have risen quite a bit. Like, I forget the exact number. It might be on the order of 40%. Maybe somebody from the Tree Farm Management Group could kind of confirm that. But those fees have already risen quite a bit. So the, you know, the amount we can continue to raise those for capital improvements might be somewhat limited. And then, and then finally, I, I, I'm there a lot, and I do see all the volunteer effort that goes into it, and I would love to see more help from the municipalities. You know, people mention things like, you know, fixing the trails, fixing the parking lot, you know, all that sort of stuff. You know, if, if the municipalities want a bigger part in, in running the Tree Farm, they should, you know, step up and do a bigger part in maintaining the Tree Farm. Thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Yes, Jim Gowdy on the Tree Farm Management Group, Vice President, and also the Director for Nordic Soccer Club. Firstly, thank you to all your folks for your support earlier on of us continuing our involvement with the Tree Farm. This is kind of unofficial. We are 100% on board with this. We would love to see this continue. You know, we've got a lot of skin, a lot of hours, the board members. It's kind of a baby that we adopted 20-something years ago, and we don't necessarily want to see it go. And the Tree Farm continues to be one of the best outdoor, all-grass sports facilities in New England, and we want to continue to help out, you know, how we've been doing so far. So thank you.
Thank you. Check seven again. Not seeing anyone Zoom. Hi.
Hi, I'm Giles Willey. I'm the treasurer for the Tree Farm. I also am president of the Vermont Soccer Association, which is a big user, and I'm also a taxpayer of the city. So I come at this, I, as far as the volunteer hours that were put in, I've monetized that. I'm not going to, I won't share it here, but I can provide that in detail and let you see what exactly that looks like. And then as far as the, the capital funds, certainly open to whatever creative ways we can make that work. I will say that we're, as far as the cap on the hourly rate, we're getting to the point of saturation. So if we were to add a capital fee on top of that, it, I don't know that it would go over great or not great, but it's certainly something to consider relative to what other space goes for in Chittenden County, so, but open to any kind of conversation that might make that a productive outcome.
Thank you. Look online again. Not seeing anybody there. Anyone else in the room? Remember, if you agree with anyone that came before, you can just simply concur.
My name's Malcolm Wilson. I'm a user, a volunteer, and a referee at the Tree Farm. And I just want people to consider that when there are some issues down at the Tree Farm, whether it's seven o'clock on a Sunday morning or nine o'clock on a Thursday night, you can pick the phone up and speak to someone on the Tree Farm Board, and they tend to come down and sort that problem. And I think that's something to consider, you know, when some of those phone calls are going in at seven o'clock on a Sunday morning, who would be answering that phone if the Tree Farm Board weren't there? So I, I'd like that to be considered. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else in the room? I do not see any. Oh, Cory? Online on Zoom?
Hey, my name is Cory Sinnett. I'm a referee, a volunteer, coached there for many years, and I'm in support of the Tree Farm Management Group. So just wanted to put my concerns in there. Thanks.
Sir, if you kindly come right up. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Charlie Lancaster. I'm a resident of the village of Autumn Pond and a neighborhood representative on the Tree Farm Board. Been with them about two and a half years. And I want to say that they are making a contribution to our neighborhood and to our city and town by keeping this facility in tip-top shape, having a great reputation. And we've enjoyed working with you folks here, the police department, and all the departments in town, including the Department of Ed. And we have some support from their student body, and I think have a great collaboration and would like to work more on that. I don't know what the difficulty is on the, the board, what the advantage to a municipal management structure would do. I think we're in a position to bring in more independent funding. We certainly have attracted a lot of expertise to help us out. If you look around here and all these people who come down and they volunteer, they bring their kids here, they feel their kids are safe in our environment. It's enjoyed by a number of different people. So keep that in mind when you decide what you want to do with us. So, and I appreciate the support on our board from Marcus. So it's a two-way street here, and let's keep this going.
Thank you. All right. I don't see any more hands on Zoom. Sure, come on up.
Hi, I'm Maria Godlewski. I am a town resident currently for the last five years, but I lived in Essex Junction on West Street for 11 years before that. I'm a Burlington Rugby Club member. I've played with the club for, since 2003, right around the time when we started using the Tree Farm, but we were still at the fort and working in that direction. I think being on the Tree Farm Management Group, it allows the town and the city to have a way to run a shared property. You know, it is correct that neither the town nor city would have a recreational property that they owned, was in their confines, but then they didn't run. But this is a unique entity in that it's property by both the town and the city. I think we've been fairly responsive in our meetings with the town and the city, and I believe that things that are drawn to our attention, that we are responding immediately, whether it's going down to the fields that day or connecting with neighbors or coming up with a solution, and, and coming up frankly with a low-cost solution, because there isn't a lot of money coming in, there aren't tax dollars involved, and really, it's all on user fees. So like my fellow board members, I would ask that the city, like the town, agree to discuss it with each other and hopefully allow us a lease that will allow us to be involved in capital campaigns. If we're only doing a short extension, that really limits our ability to look for that money from other community members or investments. We can't do that with such a short timeframe. So I would ask that you consider a longer lease, not a quick turnover. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Victor's phone. Online. If you'd unmute and join us, Victor, and share your last name with us. Victor, can you hear me? Alright, anyone else in the room?
Just a technical question, I received a text from someone online saying that they tried to type in, and someone said their comments in the chat are not considered public comment.
That's true. We don't take chat.
But they can still chime in.
They can offer their, they can offer their comments. By voice.
They just need to speak.
Yep. Victor, it looks like you unmuted. Would you like to share something? There you are. Great.
Hi, yeah, my name is Victor Vieri, I'm a referee, I've been refereeing for the Chittenden County for over 30 years. And I agree, I think the Tree Farm Management do a great job with those fields over there. This is one of the biggest facility in New England, if anybody knows about that. Nobody else has so many fields as we have. And I think is what they're doing is awesome. The volunteering program that they have there, how many people volunteer every year between Nordic Cup and Essex Tournament and all the other events through the year that's going on there. So, people are right to keep that going as it is. Maybe the city of Essex should step in and help them, because it's a shame to, to let that go. And definitely the parking lot needs some help there, because we walk in there, where we drive in, and it's just potholes and the, you know, definitely, they need support from the community and nothing else to take over. So, that's all I have to say. And I think, again, it's one of the greatest facility we have in New England, nobody else was as where we have. So, just keep it up and let the Tree Farm Management take care of it, and just help them. That's pretty much what I have to say. Thank you.
Continue online. Richard DeGraff?
My name's Richard DeGraff Murphy, I'm not a resident of, of the town or the junction. I sit on the Vermont Soccer Association Board. I'm also a referee that handles soccer matches at the tree farm. I am in full support of everything that the tree farm has done thus far and what they plan to do i- in, in the future. I think it's a fantastic facility, and I think if we can get a, a longer lease on that facility, greater improvements can be done, because then we can bring in some more capital to actually make those improvements that would benefit everybody. Thank you.
Marcella, online. If you could show your last name, too.
Hello, my name is Melloini, M-E-L-L-O-N-I. Not a resident of Essex Town, nor the other one. But we, I just wanted to say that I'm in support of everything that everyone has said about the Tree Farm Management continuing. I think it is a beautiful space that's of the community, by the community, and for the community. I agree about all of the additional volunteer hours and just care and investment in the space, and think that absolutely the management should continue by the Tree Farm Management Group. I think it would be inappropriate for the municipality to step in.
Yep, and my name's Ryan McDermott. I've been playing soccer at the tree farm for over 10 years, and same thing, just want to say that, you know, I'm in favor of the Tree Farm Management Group, you know, continuing to run the facility, they've been doing a great job.
Someone back here, hi, come on up.
Thank you, my name is Sean Reel, I'm a Essex, uh, City of Essex Junction resident. I've been playing soccer at the tree farm, I, I have two children who also play that, and been doing that for years. I actually proposed to my wife on the bridge there. That aside, I am encouraged by-
She said yes, apparently.
Yeah. I'm encouraged by the idea of collaboration and seeing that the Tree Farm Management Group is really fit to run it. I am concerned about the collaboration between the town and the, and the city because of recent disagreements or separations. Having one or both of those try to run this facility might create some hiccups where a separate, isolated entity running that, working together in collaboration, seems like the best structural integrity to create a viable product for the, for the city, which is, like everyone has said here, a precious, precious piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last couple. Anyone else in the room? All right, Sven, online? Did I miss a hand over here?
Yes, hello, everyone. I'm a resident of the town of Essex, I'm also the President of the Tree Farm Management Group. I'm home today, six, so I'm sorry, can't be there. I just want to say that the Tree Farm Board in general, we do our best at the tree farm, given what we have, tons of volunteer time. And I think going forward, if we are invited back, better collaboration between the two, the two cities would be paramount for us to do even a better job than what we're doing now. Right now, we're kind of stuck between a rock and a hard place, trying to please both sides. I think if we can all come together and have one clear vision, that would be very favorable and make it my job easier in managing the tree farm. Thank you.
Did I miss a hand over here earlier? No. Okay, thanks, everyone, we appreciate it.
One more.
My timer's up.
There's one more hand up online.
There is? Okay. They're fast. Annie Cooper, see your hand up.
Annie, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Thanks Regina, thanks Raj, thanks for having this topic on the agenda this evening. I would like to echo so many statements here this evening in support of the Tree Farm Management Group carrying on. And I'd like to also echo Marcella's language, I hope she doesn't mind, that it would be inappropriate for any of this to go to a municipality. And to echo the gentleman that just spoke, I agree that the collaboration, the sense of community, and the fact that it is a precious, not just piece of land, but sense of community. I think that the Tree Farm Management Group is able to remain true to self, true to community, true to the very essence of what community is, because they have no hand in the political warfare between the town and the city. And I believe strongly that it is in the best interest of all people in both communities that the Tree Farm Management Group continue in order that the best foot is put forward in that regard, and there's no money grab or any other form of problematic thing that can arise that would break that sense of community. I think in this day and age, especially for our children, it is integral to their well-being that there is this powerful sense of agency of self and teamwork and community that one feels, just by the very nature of the amount of people in this room, both virtually and physically this evening. So, again, I support the Tree Farm Management Group, and I think they're doing a great job. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Go ahead once.
Raj, I'm not sure, Sven, did you raise your hand a second time? It might still just be, no, okay.
Sorry. Okay, I'll bring it back to the board. We need a motion on this to proceed for staff to understand how we want them to proceed. Anything, anybody want to discuss based on what we just heard?
Yeah, I guess, I guess the question is, what is the most appropriate conversa- what, what do you, I guess, maybe we should talk about what the most appropriate conversation is with the town to start this. Is it a subcommittee of our council? Is it staff conversations? I would really like to get Regina's opinion and our, and board opinion on, on this.
Regina?
I think we certainly could work at a staff level if we have clear direction on what it is that you would like us to do. I think we did have staff conversations starting over the summer and kind of-
Victor, can you mute? If you, I don't know if you realize you're still on.
So, really, I, I think you can go either way, but if you do want staff to pick it up, that's fine, we just need clear direction on what it is that you would like us to achieve.
I'll also just, just add, and I want to hear everybody else's view, view on this, if we do do this through a board subcommittee, I'd be happy to participate in that conversation with the town.
Sure. I think, well, go ahead, anybody else?
I think it would be worthwhile for us to have a conversation with the town and to hear their reasoning as to why they thought we should extend the lease. So, I'd like to hear that, because we just haven't had any conversations with them. I would like to talk with them about how we can manage capital development. I'm really encouraged to hear so many different people today say that there might be opportunities to collaborate on that. So, what would that look like? What kind of capital investment are we looking for? I would like to talk with the town about the parking lot and the road. So, I think the conversation has to start with an assessment of where things are right now. Who covers, who, who deals with the road? Who deals with whatever? As long as we have a clear description of what, the way the status quo is right now, and then what we want to see changed, and whether we, and what kind of capital investment we're thinking that we want to make.
Yeah, and I think my suggesting that to start small was, we have a lot of history and not a lot of time. A lot of history getting together as full boards, that takes an awful lot of time and planning. I would suggest that a couple of us get together with their leadership or representatives to see if there's any interest in exploring some of these topics in the first place, quite honestly. And where there might be some agreement, so that we can at least start somewhere. That would be the intention of the, of that conversation. And then, that discussion would potentially go back to staff as to how to make that work. What kind of timeline are we dealing with? I think, so that's kind of the idea, is because we, we haven't had that opportunity, and frankly, I, before we had that initial conversation, I'm not all that interested in having the two boards come together for a full-on 10-person conversation on this. Been there. I don't think either board has time for that right now. It's budget season. So, that's, that's my idea. We handle capital and some of these enterprise funds a little bit differently, but generally speaking, when we offer a service or we have a facility like this, like Part Street School or some of our Maple Street programs, those programs usually pay for their own improvements. I think the town is used to hearing that. I don't think there's anything new there. So, I think there's a lot of areas that we can talk about where we'll have certainly understanding about where we're coming from, we just haven't had a chance to do it. And bring that, what we heard tonight about enthusiasm around that collaboration, bring that to them, so they understand that that's where we're coming from as well. So, Tim?
If we're having a discussion about enthusiasm of collaboration, I'm all for it. I think, and I would absolutely, if you want to have a subcommittee and assist Marcus, be there.
Dear Lord. I was going to suggest it was board leadership, but I'm not going to demand that. We want to get together. Amber, what do you think?
I think it's funny that Tim basically just volunteered Marcus, but I, I agree. I, I think it makes sense to me to have two folks from our council meet with two folks from the select board and have a discussion, and then bring it back to the full board.
I think someone's going to suggest Amber's going to do it.
Would you like to amend? No, I'm sorry. I want to bring it back then to, sorry, I got to take this out. Bring it back to the fact that, as noted, I just want, from a timing standpoint, to acknowledge if nobody's read this page in the packet, that the agreement needs to be in place before the end of next year. So, while we can start these discussions soon, we don't have to have, if it requires a full, some sort of meetup between the two, we don't have to do that in this first quarter or even the second quarter. We've got a bit of time, so, to work that through. I think it's, I think, I'm, I'm hopeful then that at least the management group can feel like walking away from this conversation, and at least between the two, at this particular moment, we are talking about generally them moving forward. So, I think, they cannot worry about tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah, I agree. And I think with this intention, the reopening of the current agreement is, is met, I think, for a number of reasons. We would ideally really want to know by this spring, so that everybody can plan properly what happens after December.
Yeah, I would agree that, I would like Tree Farm to know soon, the direction that, certainly before they start prepping fields, the direction that the boards are thinking. That would be my intention. And if there is a nice, engaging conversation going on, that they're part of it in some way, shape, or form, where appropriate. Yeah. So, moving this on, any other volunteers besides the volunteer effort that Tim put forward?
Elaine?
I think I'm hung up on the next committee.
Which one's that? Okay.
Marcus and I can carpool.
Amber, you want to get in this?
I nominate Mr. Miller.
We live right down the street from each other, so we can figure it out and go from there. Unless you want to, as the board chair, as the council chair?
Yeah, I think I'd like to do it, actually.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Just going to climb it.
Sure.
If you want to take over for Marcus.
I think he's, he's a little bit better versed.
It would be nice with Marcus's experience on the board to have your perspective there.
That's, that's why I've volunteered him.
All right, so that, we can work on that. But as far as the motion, what would that look like? Guess I move that staff set up a meeting between City Council Representatives, Marcus Serta and Raj Chala, to meet with, or to request a meeting with two select board members to begin a dialogue around the future of the tree farm property. Leave it there, it seems simple enough.
I'll second.
Great. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you all very much for coming and sharing your thoughts.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, we appreciate the work that Tree Farm has done so far.
Thank you all.
The property is obviously in very good hands. Thank you. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all for coming out.
Thank you, folks. Thank you, thank you for coming.
Thanks, Charlie, good to see you.
All right. Interviews, everybody's been waiting?
Tim Miller, it's nice to meet you.
And then there was none, you took the other.
Oh, except for people that-
Yeah, check online.
This is a little breathing room.
Okay. All right, seems to have quieted down. 5B Police Community Advisory Board Governance Committee and Recreation Advisory Committee interviews and consideration of appointments. Thank you all for your patience and for waiting. We will start with the Police Community Advisory Board, and we'll go in the order in which they are in the packet, which would mean-
David Harrington.
David Harrington. Is David here? Come on, thanks for coming, come on up. And if you don't mind for the microphone and for the minutes, just introduce yourself. If you don't mind for the, for the record, just introduce yourself.
My name is David Harrington. I live here in Essex Junction.
Great. Thanks. And you've applied for the Police Community Advisory Board?
Yes, that's correct.
I just wanted to read something real quicks as we do these committees, so people understand what the committee's mission is and what we're doing. As an independent board, the Police Community Advisory Board's purpose is to facilitate communication between the Essex Junction community and the Essex Police Department, and provide feedback and support to the EPD on strategies and policy, especially around issues of equity. Central to this stated purpose is an emphasis on ensuring the voices and needs of systemically marginalized, disenfranchised, and oppressed members of the community are heard with regard to public safety. And I'll do the same when we get to recreation and governance, in terms of the mission. So, should have done that before I invited you up, so I apologize. But we have your application. We have your information in terms of why you were, what we asked in the application. And we really appreciate, speaking for myself, you putting yourself forward to do this. Can you share with us sort of a little more on your motivations? What brought you to this and what interests you have in this particular role?
Well, I've been retired, I'm a retired state police officer. I worked various positions around the state for 28 years before I retired in 2008. And I've done a variety of different things in community work over the, over my lifetime, and I just felt it was time to reengage. I think there's a lot of issues with police departments all around the county in terms of recruiting and staffing, and, you know, trying to develop strategies to work with the community with very little in the way of resources in some cases. And I think I have a lot to offer in terms of my experience and how I've handled staffing shortages and my work with the community in the past. When I was the station commander at Middlesex, I established the State Police Community Advisory Board, which was the first in the state. And it was very successful. We had representatives from each of the 28 towns that we were responsible for in that area. And long after I retired, they were still going. I don't know if they're going now, but it was a very successful program. And so, anyway, I think I have a lot to offer in terms of understanding the culture of the police, but also with my work in the community. I'm well aware of the issues that, you know, that the community, different members of the community may face in dealing with the police. I've served on the Berrytown School Board for eight years. I, you know, helped out at the library. I've been a treasurer of Boy Scouts, you know, just a variety of different things that I've done over the years. And so, I just think I would be helpful.
Great. Marcus?
Can you, thank you so much for putting in the application. I'll say this for everyone. Thank you so much for putting the application. That way I only say it once. But I did want to ask, looking at your application, if you don't mind, can you give me an example of some of the impact or some of the work that your committee did? Because you acknowledged the fact that you reported to the State Police Advisory Committee. You also established a citizen advisory committee many years ago. And I'm just curious if you can give an example of one of the impacts that it may have had.
Well, one of the things that came from the work that we did was, we were able to understand, you know, so the community members that would represent their town would come to us, and they would represent the various issues that they were dealing with in that town. Every town was different. In one town, it might have been speeders that they were concerned about. In another town, it might have been underage drinking and partying going on. In another town, it might be, you know, criminal activity. So, what we did is, is we tried to address each of those issues through the, through the work of the committee, in terms of getting them to understand what we could do and what we couldn't do. For example, one of the things that we did was, we organized a neighborhood watch program in one particular town, because they were having problems with burglaries into private residences. So, that was one of the things that we worked out as a solution and got a good response from that. So, there's just a lot of strategizing that goes on in terms of trying to address, you know, the various concerns in the very diverse communities that we serve.
Thank you. Amber, do you have any?
No questions.
Throughout the evening, I'm going to assume if I see your hand that you do, otherwise you don't.
I think that's a fair assumption.
That's perfect. Okay. I think that's it.
One last thing.
Go ahead. Yes, please.
If, for any reason, you were not selected for this board, would you be open, willing to participate on any other board within the city?
Yeah, I'd be open to having a discussion about it, sure. Yeah, thank you.
All right, between what we've asked and what you've provided, I think we're all set. So, thank you. I believe we're on schedule to make some decisions tonight, but we should hear from us soon regardless. So, I appreciate your time.
All right. Thank you for having me.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Jenny Parker?
Hi.
Thank you for coming.
So, again, my name is Jenny Parker, resident and homeowner at Essex Junction, about a minute away from here. So, it's very convenient.
Very convenient. So, again, we've got a lot of information from you. Thank you for that. Thanks for your interest. Can you sort of summarize a little bit more about your motivation or?
So, this committee is really interesting to me. I'm presently completing graduate studies to be a psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner. And so, that being a future career, and historically having been a children's nurse, both psychiatric children's nurse and critical care and emergency work, I feel very passionately about exposing the police force in a way that is very interactive with the community, and very mindful of both our growing healthy population and those in our community who are experiencing mental illness in particular, or substance abuse, which we can kind of roll into that. Having been an EMT, both in Canada and in Oregon, I've had the privilege of working alongside the police department in some pretty hairy situations. So, I think I can, for better or worse, relate to a lot of the stress that they face on their end, and the decision-making that happens in the field as opposed to in a controlled environment is very different. And I think being able to bridge the communication gap of compassion and empathy and curiosity for both sides is something that I can, I would like to be able to bring to the table. I asked my three-year-old daughter, telling her that she was with a babysitter this evening, why I was coming, and she said, "Oh, well, you're going to help the helpers." And every time we see police ambulance fire, she always says, "Thank you, helpers." And she was like, "Well, will you be able to have them come and visit?" She goes to Park Street School, and I promised nothing. But I think-
Pretty much, yeah, I would imagine.
Yeah. High on the list. But, again, I think so much, both regionally in Vermont and then nationally, there's, it's, police is a very complex area. And I think every experience I've had, really, people, police officers want, they go into it the same way I go into nursing, is they care deeply about their community. They care deeply about each other. Everyone wants to go home safe. Everyone wants to feel like they're doing a good job. And I think finding voice and, and support and empathy, again, to help everyone feel good about being an officer, being part of a community with our officers, is my motivation.
Excellent.
Awesome. You actually answered my question, because I was just going to ask about any interactions, and you acknowledged that. So, thank you for that. And just on a personal note, thank you for being a nurse, because nursing, nurses are fantastic.
I am good. It was very thorough application, and I think your statement here has really spoken to that in the perspective that you offer.
Yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for waiting. Okay.
We've got Governance Committee.
Governance Committee, that's where I'm at.
Joshua Birmingham.
Perfect. Thank you. Saving me. We have interviewed for this before, but I can, I can sort of read what the committee is for and what they're intending to do real quick. This new committee will serve as a crucial link between the community of Essex Junction and Essex Junction Recreation and Parks, providing valuable insights and guidance in the development and maintenance of parks and recreation services. The Recreation Advisory Committee will operate in advisory capacity, offering recommendations to EGRP on matters such as programs, park and facility needs, as well as strategic capital and financial planning. Members of the committee will also play a vital role in assisting at recreation-related community events and actively engaging other community volunteers. So, thank you for joining us tonight and putting in your application.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And Raj, can I just add?
Yep.
So, Joshua, I believe you originally applied for Recreation Advisory Committee?
Yes.
And we asked you if you'd be interested in anything else?
Yes.
And so, you said you would be also open to governance?
Yes.
So, appreciate that flexibility. And so, you folks can ask him questions for both, if you'd like, for efficiency's sake.
Yeah, I'm Joshua Birmingham, resident here of Essex Junction, and recent homeowner. I just, my wife over here, Steve McFar, we just bought a house this past August over on Dunbar Drive. And my real motivation is a first-time homebuyer, you know, homeowner, trying to be active in my community. And I thought, you know, I saw in the newspaper, you know, you're looking for committee members. And I thought, hey, this is a good way to get myself out there and be involved. And I'm eager and looking forward to helping in any way possible. So, that was kind of my motivation.
Excellent. Thank you. Yeah, why the rec committee versus anything, any others? Before we talk to any of the other one?
Yeah, I think the, I think the rec-
Why would you want to do both?
Well-
Thank you for that, bud.
Yeah. Well, I think I wanted to do the rec committee, just because I'm an avid, like, hiker. I did the long trail two years ago. I love being outside. I have a dog, and I'm always like hiking or on a trail or something like that. And I thought it'd be like somewhat of an easy, you know, way to get into maybe a committee. They asked me, would you be more interested? I do have a master's in public administration from University of New Hampshire. I have 12 years of federal service. I'm a section chief for, in Department Homeland Security, so wide variety. I was a former Peace Corps volunteer in West Africa, doing agriculture work. So, I love volunteering. I love helping. So, I thought recreation, maybe that's my foot in, and maybe I can do something else. But if you want me, you know, I can do covered in. So, whatever, you know, I'm here for you guys, so.
Well, there are how many committees?
I'm just going to pull up the list.
Any openings in justice with the police?
Yeah.
No, that's great. Excellent. I think the application was really complete, and honestly, you sound like you'd be great for both. Kidding aside, anyone else?
Do you have one question I just want to tease out?
Yeah.
From the application itself?
Yep.
Not from the other potential job. But, talking about accessibility, thinking about our properties, our facilities, can you talk a little bit more about your thoughts around accessibility and how it may apply to the city?
Yeah, I mean, that's a good question. I mean, I think as an adult, and I'm a recent homeowner, and I would like to be, I'm interested in doing adult programs, adult leagues. Sometimes accessibility, I don't know, I don't know exactly what you mean in terms of accessibility. I don't know if you mean in terms of maybe people that have a disability, or maybe just people in the community looking for, you know, something.
The words in the application said easier to access, so.
Yeah.
That was, I shortened it to one word.
Accessibility for me, then, I would say is just, I'm looking to maybe get the word out, maybe more easy access to maybe more rec leagues, maybe more interest from other people who might not generally join, something like that. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, so in terms of the Governance Committee, are we like shutting down that? Are you really focused on, it's a hard question on the governance side, but if you're really not interested, I don't want to waste your time.
How much do you know about it?
I don't really know much about it, because I, it was Joanne who put in an email saying, "Hey, would you be interested?"
Oh, got it. Okay.
But I don't really, I put my effort into the rec, recreation, so I don't really know anything about the governance, so.
I would like to make a suggestion that we interview the other Governance Committee folks, and then you listen into that-
Okay.
And decide if that's still something you're interested in. And then we can have other questions if you-
Okay. Sounds good. Yeah.
Yeah, because the governance, I mean, it's time, it's time limited-
Okay.
In terms of, it's going to, you know, six to nine months, which isn't a short amount of time. But it's not sort of ongoing. You'll have a longer term, so to speak, with the rec. And your MPA would be, I think it might be interesting. But, anyway. I appreciate you putting your name in for this. I think we're good. And if you do have the time to stick around for the others, you might be interested.
No problem. Yeah.
All right. Rachel?
Before we move on, I did forget, I should have asked Jenny, hi. Sorry, if you don't mind, quick question. If you were not chosen for your committee, would you be open to another? This is going to be the question for everybody tonight, so.
Yes, I am open to other options.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I can't seem to remember to ask that.
I remember this little fact, this little thing between you and Andrew back in the day, and that was-
And I just, still.
We're here, we're here again. It's all good.
Hello. I'm Rachel Hambon. I am a resident of Essex Junction as of about a year and a half ago.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, so a little bit, if you could just put, you know, summarize sort of your motivation for the, for the rec.
Sure. So, kind of similarly, I received an email from my kiddo's pre-K teacher saying, "Please apply to be on the Recreation Advisory Committee." And I, I work for Special Olympics Vermont, so my entire job runs because of volunteer power. So, I recognize that volunteers are critical to all sorts of things. So, I thought this might be a bite-size that I can offer, that volunteer capacity. I also am a parent of two kiddos, so I have a kiddo at the Park Street School through EJRP. And I have a first grader at Summit who's a rec kid, Camp Maple Street, enrolled in soccer, and all kinds of things through the rec department. And I, myself, have eagerly pored through the EJRP catalog, looking for all of the amazing things for my kids, and have also noticed sort of a gap in things that resonate with me personally, or that maybe match up with my time and availability. So, I think my motivation is to continue all of the really incredible things that are happening, access and maintenance of the facilities that we have, which I have loved in kind of becoming a newer member of this community. But then also kind of looking at where are the gaps in what the programs are at this point, versus maybe the interest or demands of the community.
Excellent. Go ahead. Did you both put your hand up?
No, no.
No, Marcus.
So, I do want to ask, because I have not had a chance to ask somebody in this forum, can you give me a little bit of insight into your experience and what it means to you to have your, have your child in our pre-K program, in our pre-K program? I can enunciate.
Yeah, so I can. So, I moved here from Burlington, and I put my kid on a waitlist for pre-K when I was eight months pregnant. He got into that pre-K when he turned four, and, and, you know, had already been enrolled elsewhere for years. We moved to Essex Junction and saw, looking through the EJRP catalog that our home sellers left for us at closing, that there was an EJRP program. We enrolled somehow, we got right in. It's affordable. It's close to home. We can bike there. The program's incredible. Like, we love Christina. And, yeah, we've just been so thrilled to have that as part of EJRP, which is not something I've seen in other communities. It's really unique.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Well, let's end on a high note. Well, let's end on a hi. No, thank you very much for putting your name in. Appreciate it.
Yeah, go ahead, Marcus.
And if you're not picked for this committee, I can't even say it. Like blocking myself and saying, if you're not picked for this community, are you open to considering other opportunities?
I will say I'm open to considering, though my profession is recreation, my child kind of interest in persuasion is certainly recreation-heavy. So my expertise and interests both align best with this committee, though I could be persuaded.
Got you. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Governance, right?
Yes, Raj, sorry, I didn't notice, I didn't keep up with you. So yes, if we could go back to governance, so then Joshua can hear and not have to stay here for both groups. So Steve Eustace.
Great. And I will read this very briefly. Governance Committee is to explore the governance structures aimed at ensuring equitable representation of voices at policymaking tables. The committee will serve in an advisory capacity of the City Council, focusing on studying governance considerations for the city. This includes, but is not limited to, the form of government, election of officials, governing body composition, term of office, term limits, and council compensation. That's pretty much it. Steve, you've been on the trustees, I said select board, sorry. You've been on the select board in the past, but if you could introduce yourself for a minute.
Sure. So Steve Eustace, so I've been an elected official of Essex Junction since 1998. And I was on the Board of Trustees for five years at first, loved it. I love municipal government. I got off because of time commitment pressures and that's when I transitioned to moderator, since it's a lot less time commitment. And, but I follow everything extremely closely in our community and others. And I thought this was a great opportunity because it's very time constrained, you know, it's for a short period of time. So it seemed like, and I really believe I could, you know, give a lot back. I was involved in 98 of setting up, when we were trying to be a city then, setting up a government structure for that at the time. So very involved in that entire process. And then obviously I've been following everything since. So this, I was really excited. I told Regina ahead of time when I heard that this was going to be coming up, let me know as soon as they open it, in case I somehow miss it, so I could get a letter in. Like I was very excited. Anyway.
This is so up your alley.
Well, it's getting not selected for this committee. Yeah, I guess I'm curious from, I'll ask this of everybody. I mean, I guess, you know, with your experience here, doing this work, how open are you to really exploring alternative methods of doing this work?
Yeah, I have an open mind. I clearly understand how things work today. And I assume we're going to gather input from a bunch of sources, weigh it all out. And I'm very, I like to think I have an open mind and I do that in my job and other things, so. I think it's a good, it's a, you know, there's a lot of inertia in the system on any decision. And we could see that with the whole tree farm management group. There's an inertia there. And so to, and everything that we do. Why Essex Junction Rec and Parks was in this school and then it, you know, inertia in municipal government is very strong. And so to kind of have it, when we got the charter, got it all approved, that it says you have to consider this and look at all the options, I actually think that's good because it kind of, it kind of puts the foot in the door, like you need to at least consider other things. And, you know, maybe some great idea comes out, maybe it doesn't. But at least the committee got together, gathered a lot of input from the community, whatever, from staff, and we can put that together.
Yeah, and I think the intention, just for background, maybe I should have said this earlier, I think the intention was the movement for separation didn't really afford time to give consideration to a lot of the things that we're hoping that this committee considers. And this is a push that goes back well over 10 years in our community generally, Essex and Essex Junction, in terms of wanting to explore these topics. And this was, we just didn't want to leave it behind, so.
Yeah, no, that sounds good. I'm familiar with how the other municipalities in the county work. And so, anyway, hopefully I can be a good resource in terms of being on other committees, again, given all the irons in the, I'll beat you to the punch, in terms of all the irons I got in the fire. I'm very interested in all that stuff, but I probably don't have the time.
I understand.
I have a question. Based on what Raj just talked about with the mission of this group, and in fact, the charter is less prescriptive than, I'm not sure where we got that from, but it involves also considering whether or not we should have wards or districts. How open are you to, if the conversation, and this is for every one of you who are interviewing for this question, this position, how open are you to the possibility that the committee says, status quo is great, council manager form of government's great, we don't need wards? Like, what if nothing changes? Is that, are you understanding that that might happen?
Oh, yeah. That could be an answer. I think the key is evaluate everything, look at the data and go where the data goes and where people's interests are. And if we come up with the fact that we've got a great plan, great. Maybe we need to make some changes around the edges on participation voting, whatever. You listed a whole bunch of things that we're going to consider, right? Or maybe we have to do something completely different. But let's gather the data, gather the input and see where it takes us. And if it takes us back, like we've got an awesome way of doing things, that's fine. I don't have a problem. But I think, again, a key, the whole thing forces us to at least take stock and examine it, right? And I think that's what's important, to kind of break that inertia and not just do something because we've been doing it. If we study it and it's working great, well then, there's no reason to change. But let's gather the data and input from everything.
Can I ask a follow-up to that? If you don't mind, I'll just, I'll ask the question this way. So if there was no committee, but you had a magic wand, we asked you, do something, what would you do to improve our governance? And I say that from a very broad term. So I'm not saying like you have to change councilor manager, all that stuff. I'm just saying if there's something that you would look at, looking at our municipality that you could improve.
Just complete, has nothing to do with the governance committee.
Yeah, just right now, if you were to, if you were to improve something in the way that we do business.
Yep. If you, if I'm going completely off the cuff, I would say staff communication, right? I think the board, it's very easy to follow what the board is doing, minutes and stuff. Tim's been putting some things now in the forum as well. So I am very well aware of what the board is doing. The agendas are published, all the discussions are there. When the staff is doing things that is or isn't related to what the board is doing, there's not a lot of visibility. And I think it would be great for people to understand, like, hey, this is happening or that's happening. Not that it needs to be a big debate, but just to let people know. And that's where we got into things where, and I've brought it up at this board before, like, hey, you need to tell the people in our neighborhood that they need to take the trees down. Or, hey, they're going to be putting fiber optics and there's going to be people digging in your front yard this morning. Like getting heads up on things like that and not that they're controversial, it's just like communicating what's going on in town. And, because there's a lot of day-to-day decisions that the staff is involved with, be it Public Works or, you know, whatever, Fire Department, whatever. You know, hey, wouldn't it be a great idea if we did the locks so you can get in the house if there's a fire? You know, like all those different things, just, you know, you can only gather so much from reading all the minutes. And I do follow all the different committee meetings and things like that. Like I said, I like municipal government. But that's the big piece where I lose, I don't have visibility and all of a sudden there's a guy digging in the front yard. And I'm like, what's going on? And it's in the right of way and all of that. But it's still, like, anyway, so if you asked me carte blanche, you're like, if I, that's what I would say, more communication, be it a newsletter. And I think we started something recently on things. And that's a great forum to say like, hey, here's some things going on, there's this initiative or that initiative, that aren't necessarily board items, but just running a municipality items. Is that?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Appreciate it. Beg help.
Good thing I had something in my pocket.
You didn't, right with that, Steve.
What's that?
Pulled that right out. Well done.
And I think, I don't want to say anything against the staff because they're doing a great job. So I don't want them, I don't want you to feel like that was a ding.
Oh, I think committee.
In the front yard.
Thanks.
All right.
Good?
Yeah, I think so. Thanks, Steve.
Thanks, Steve. Very much.
Let me just make a point before we have our next person up. In order for us, I just want everyone to remember, there is some precedent here and there's some history here. There have been multiple committees that have explored Essex Junction governance. The most recent and most thorough and the one that actually cost money was the Essex Governance Group. There will be a lot of information that is already available about what the community wants. And so I just want to emphasize that we do not need to reinvent the wheel on this. There's a lot of information already available.
I remember from how it's operated.
Well, and Deb and Gabrielle, we're both deeply involved in that process, so I'm happy to see them both here for this.
Deb, you're up.
Hi, I'm Deb McAdoo and I'm living in the city. Nice. And I'm here and I'm motivated because I think we have a great community. And I think that we've done some really wonderful things in the last 10, 15 years. And I want to see it get all the way. We're almost there. You told me five years and we'd get that budget on the ballot. Damn, we did it. Thank COVID, but we did it.
Took a panty.
I believe that we can do whatever we put our minds to. And I'm hoping that we can create a community that has engaged citizens. I really think, you know, you shouldn't have to say, would you take another committee? I don't think I will. But you should, you shouldn't have to say it. We should add people that would want to participate. I think that once you get in and you get involved, and I'm happy to see the new folks in because I was new when I started and I have a nice core of friends and I have a nice understanding of how my community works. And I think that the next five years is going to be pretty exciting, so I'd like to be a part of it.
I've known Deb for 20-some odd years, so I'm good.
And he still wants me.
Yeah, I think, just to echo what Elaine said, I think there's a lot of history and I think we've made some headway, for sure.
I think one unique thing too is that I bring the history because I was on the Budget to Ballot in the egg group and so, and I remember all of those different models. And some of them scared me. Some of them, I didn't know if they'd work or not. And I think status quo, I think we're okay for now, but I do think that there is something we need to do for more engagement, more input. I don't want to watch, I love your show, by the way. And I don't want to have to watch people come in angry and yelling at you because you did something that they didn't know about. I think the rental registry could have gone a lot different if we had more engaged people that would have had more information ahead of time. I think that the split in the committee kind of had something to do with that. But I think that we have a lot of potential and I'd like to see us work with it.
Given the history and the egg effort and report, it's already out there that Elaine mentioned, given all that, how open are you to really examining other opportunities as well? I mean, because that goes back quite a bit with different, some of that was, is very relevant right now. Some of it was looking towards a different outcome a few years ago. So there's a mix there. So I'm just curious like how.
We're the same community that we were five years ago. I think all of us are different. So, you know, even though we have that history and that data from then, this is now and this is like a whole new world sometimes. So I think that I'm open to exploring and I want to do that. I don't want to be a ward captain and I don't want to be mayor, but I want to be able to have input and I want to be able to look at the options and get as much information from citizens as we can on what they want.
Exactly. Great.
Yeah, answer all my questions.
I'm good. Thank you.
Nothing.
Look, you actually already, you already answered the questions that already came, so I really appreciate that.
All right. Thank you, Deb.
Thanks, Deb. Candace.
Yes.
Please join us.
Nice.
Thank you for waiting. Again.
Yeah, no problem. Candace Morgan and I am a resident of the city of Essex Junction. I live over on Arlington Street and I've been there for 10 years now.
Great.
Yes.
Can you give us a little background as to what your motivation is for this particular
Yeah, absolutely. I was really excited when I saw this as an opportunity out there because I think that we are at such a pivotal point in terms of how we want to continue to operate going forward. Obviously, I've been in Essex for a while. I haven't always been involved in all the local governance conversations, but certainly have followed it from afar. And I think that we're asking the right questions at the right time. And I think that, you know, asking folks to be involved and serve in an advisory role to you all, I think is a really important way to structure this as well, to give you recommendations and consider things as we move forward and can bring a variety of perspectives to those conversations from folks that have that history who, or others that are new to the community or new to these conversations. I think that given all of the change that we have seen in terms of how we're run and operated, it's a great conversation to have right now. And I would, you know, be happy to be a part of that as well.
I know Candace from many other entities and think very highly of you. I'm very glad you stepped up.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
I think you heard it come up twice already, so just re-ask it. So your thoughts on whether or not change your status quo? And if you had a magic wand, is there something you might improve?
Yeah, I am not afraid to blow stuff up, right? It's some of the things that I like to do in the job that I've had. I like to sort of ask the, you know, slightly provocative questions if that's what needs to happen and evaluate those options. But I'm also happy to accept that what we're doing is working in a lot of ways. And so it's not to say that we need to throw it all out either. I think that we are, you know, unique in being such a small sort of geographic city in terms of the square mileage that we take up, right? But also having a huge population and that's ever-growing. And so I think we've just got to figure out how we want to capture all those different voices in a meaningful way and open to looking at, you know, how other cities and towns in Vermont have considered those changes at different points in time, looking at, you know, elsewhere as well. I spend a lot of time in sort of state and local policy in my day job and have for most of my career. And so that's an area that I like to look at and I'm happy to dive into some of those reports in the past, but also happy to consider other things too, if it feels like we're in a different place as a community than we might have been when that work was done. I, in terms of a magic wand, I mean, there's a lot that comes to mind in some ways, but I think building a little bit on Steve's point, I think that having engaged citizens is really important and we want to create those opportunities for folks to get involved. But we also recognize that people can't always be involved. And so we've got to make ourselves welcoming and show that we're hearing folks, even if there's not always an opportunity to sit at a meeting or to read all of the minutes, right? We got to make sure that we're being responsive and transparent in whatever way people want to engage with us. And so that's, you know, I think building on some of that work that's there, but not relying on some of the more formal processes, because that's not how folks are going to really engage with us as much as maybe they used to 10, 15, 20 years ago, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
In terms of the favorite question of the night, if not selected for this committee, would you be open to?
Yeah, I would be open to it for sure. I think what attracted me to this one candidly is the sort of time-limited nature of it right now, just given where I'm at professionally and otherwise. But yeah, always happy to be considered or think through other options.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Brian Sheldon. Thanks for joining us.
Hi, everybody. Doing well?
Excellent. Hope you all know you.
Thanks for dressing up.
Thanks for.
I forgot, I have a purple Santa hat. I should have brought it, but no.
Next week, we're meeting too.
Next week, we're meeting, too.
Yeah.
Yes, you can bring it to that. Can you just sort of give us an overview of your motivations here?
Sure. I mean, as, as you mentioned, you all know me, a lot of the reasons you guys know me is through local politics, right? So, and my introduction to local politics was actually in Austin, Texas. And in, in Austin, they had, they had a at-large, at-large city council of five people, I believe. And at the time, I mean, this is a, my commute was within the City of Austin and it was 26 miles. So a little bit bigger, both geographically. And, and population-wise, Austin's just under a million people. But they had five city councillors that all lived within two minutes of, or two miles of City Hall. So there was a proposal on the table to have districts in that case. And, and I, one of the, and I helped gather signatures to get that on the ballot and it passed. And it's now, it's now law in Austin. So, so I really liked that, that particular proposal. And I can bore you with the details, so. So let's not bore you with the details because one of the things I think you're going to ask me is if I have predetermined notion about how we should go forward. And I, and I, and I really don't. I do, I do have, I did, I did fight pretty hard against the, the 3-3 proposal, which is the, the history on why we, one of the reasons why this, this proposal is part of the charter, right, is because that, that passed, but we couldn't get it into the town quickly enough in order, before the merger and separation happened. So my, I do, I do have a, some, particularly in terms of districts, in districting, I do have interest and experience that I think is relevant. As a member of the Town of Essex, I'm BCA, I live in the city now. But as a member of the Town of Essex BCA, I did some sample districts to try to, because the BCA helps give, give, give feedback to the legislature on that. So, you know, I played with some of the districting software to see what districts might be viable within the town. And like, for example, I know the neighborhood by, by where, where you live, Mr. President, is, is challenging because here's the thing. The, if you want to add it on, if you want to add on to, if you want to add any, because it's too, it's pretty small. But if you want to add on a little bit, you have to go a long ways because either you cross the town boundary to the north or the, or the fairgrounds where actually it's not, nobody lives there. Only 40 people live there. I don't know who these people are. But, 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 so there's some challenges that I've, that I've played with if, if districting is the, if, is, is a way that we decide to go. So.
We have had, in the governance report, one of the goals was to establish neighborhood forums, sort of like NPAs in Burlington.
Yep.
And so that has been a consideration in the past. In terms of participation, it might be a, a great way to, to move forward. So we'll see what happens.
Magic wand?
I think, I, I think a lot of the folks have touched on this as well. And I think you, you guys have this, this experience, I think, that I'm about to talk about, is, is that there, there is, there is a small number of people in any municipal issue who are very, very vocal. And what that doesn't do is capture, you capture the whole, the whole, the whole opinion of all the electorate. So, I mean, I don't know, in my application, I talked about maybe leveraging some of my experience, door knocking to see if we could get some information. I don't know if that's, I don't know if we have the time for that, to be, to be honest. But, but yeah, if I have a magic wand, it would be to, you know, gather some better data from the, you know, kind of silent majority of Essex Junction.
Excellent. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Gabrielle.
Hi, everybody. Gabrielle Smith. I live on Woodstock Lane in the city. Want me to start by saying a few things?
Sure, go for it. Yes.
So I've not been, I've, I've been very active in the past. When I first moved here, I didn't have any interest in all of this. And then I got involved in a thing called Heart and Soul of Essex and I became kind of a municipal junkie. And I have a deep appreciation for municipal governance and municipal staff. And I think that what I've discovered in my journey since, which led me to work nationally for Community Heart and Souls. I've been to so many municipalities, worked with so many staff and municipal leaders. And I think that what I learned is that I think most people, municipal government is just kind of opaque. And you maybe even don't really think a whole lot about how important it is to your life. You just, it's just something that happens around you because there's so many essential services that you all make sure happen. And I think what I learned through that evolution, through the Essex Governance Group and then with Our Village, Our Voices, is people need the opportunity to, to begin to understand before they can be asked their opinion. We're asked our opinion like, I don't know, well, my opinion on the sewer utility water district? Like, I don't know. My toilet flushes, so I'm feeling pretty good about that. I just, I don't mean demean all of us who, I'm one of those folks, right? But I do think that it doesn't take a lot. What I learned with Our Village, Our Voices is that if you show up in a way where you're putting people, residents first, and really thinking, what do you, what do you need to know? And no question is stupid. And we're here to just help you get accurate information so you can make whatever decision you want to make. And look what, look what happened. I mean, the turnout, that was, I mean, I remember Raj saying it passed. I'm like, oh, my God, look at the turnout for a single issue, you know? Like, that to me was exciting and invigorating. The reason I'm here is because of what Raj said, is that we made a promise with Our Village, Our Voices, that we would do this because we didn't have the time. So here I am.
Thank you. Awesome.
I'll ask his question. If you had a magic wand.
If I had a magic wand, I would love for people to not see property taxes as anything but an ever-increasing drain. I, I, I understand so many people are under significant financial strains and property taxes can be a whopper. And yet, as you all know, every single one of those dollars does something locally. And I think that my magic wand would be that with that appreciation and understanding, especially those of us who can afford to pay, would have a way to do it. Because frankly, I think my magic wand would be that our staff isn't so strained. I look at Chelsea, you know, she's doing two jobs now. Why? Because she has to. And she's doing it. I don't hear her complaining about it, but she's doing it. And the more she does it, as we all know, the less likely it is she's going to ever get it separated out and have all the services she needs, right? So that would be my dream, that people have the opportunity to understand and appreciate what local government is all about, the way your tax dollars gets you. Maybe not you personally, all the time.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Appreciate it.
So back to you, Josh. You can, if you'd like, or you can, or you can just let us. I don't, I don't want to, I, yeah, I don't want to put you on the spot. If you want to think about it and let Joanne know or Regina know, like your interest, we're, we're not, there's still room on the committee. And so if it's, if you just let us know. That said, I, well, having said that, we should probably know, we can wait on a decision on both. I suppose. If, if you tell me, if you'd like us to wait on both of them, we can wait on both of them. I don't, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but I want you to have the opportunity to think about it. Yeah, yeah, I'll think about it. I'll get back to Joanne. Okay. Is that reasonable?
Yeah, I think that works.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. That was, that's the extent of the interviews tonight. So we appreciate you spending the time.
Very much appreciate everyone who's willing to step up and serve on a committee.
Okay. Yes.
I thought I saw something in the packet of budget timeline.
Coming right up.
Okay, great. Okay. Sure. All right. 560, Discussion and Consideration of Budget Engagement Schedule and Annual Meeting Schedule.
Okay. We've got Ashley here online. And so essentially what you've got in your packet. So as you know, we started looking at the budget with the council for the first time last Tuesday on Budget Day. And now we've got a couple of schedule items to talk through with you, both in terms of trying to get the word out there and engagement with the community about the budget. And then also post sending the budget to the voters, you're going to do something by the end of February that will finalize the budget from your end. And then there's another avenue to get the word out before folks vote. So Ashley put some stuff together for you. Also Susan did as well. That's how that whole kind of table is in there with all the different parts and pieces and timelines and things that, things that have to happen. And we've got a couple of dates for you to sort through and open to any other thoughts and opinions on anything else in addition, alternatives, other ways to kind of try to get the word out and meet with folks. Ashley, anything you want to add to that?
No, just basically, we really are trying to focus on our feedback for our engagement period in January and February. Like Regina said, we have to get that passed and the warning done by the end of February so we can get it on the ballot and in the annual report newsletter. So really trying to focus our engagement efforts to get feedback in that timeframe. And then after that, it'll be just educational purposes of getting the information about what's on the ballot going forward. So you will see, we have the community meal as an opportunity. We did this last year. We did it on a Saturday last year and combined it with the strategic planning efforts that we did. We looked at CVE to see if there was another opportunity that we could do this on an evening during the week or something like that. Unfortunately, CVE was only available on that January 25th date. So now we're just trying to figure out if we want to do that as a morning, a noon lunch, or in the evening for that meeting. You'll also see, there's a couple of coffee chats added in here. We can do other things. I didn't want to bombard you with lots of different things, but there are other opportunities, obviously, of meeting with some of our civic groups, like our Rotary Club and our Lions Club, reaching out to our senior groups within the community. Or we can do some more creative things that I'm happy to discuss tonight if that's something that you guys are interested in. The only last thing I'm going to point out is the informational meeting. In the past, we had to have that within 10 days prior to the vote. They have extended that to 30 days now. So we do have a little bit more time to do that earlier, to make that informational meeting a more valuable timeframe. In the past, we had gotten the ballots out and a lot of people had already voted by the time we had, did the informational meeting. In here, we have some dates for you to decide upon that will allow it to be going out or do the informational meeting around the same time that those ballots are going out. So those are the two things that we need from you tonight.
Thank you, Ash. Thanks you for staying late, or staying, waiting so long. Yeah, and I appreciate the change that was made. It makes so much more sense to have the informational meeting match when the ballots actually go out. So glad we finally have that alignment. And I guess next week, or is it January that we talk about? The ballot mailing topic is next week, right?
So the school board is meeting tomorrow night. So we will know what they're doing on that. And so hopefully we'll have a direction by this Friday. So you'll either have something in your packet next week or you won't.
Well, we have gotten some preliminary information from the city clerk about what her recommendation is at this point.
Yes. Essentially, so the, the concept is, are we universally mailing ballots? Or are we doing a slightly hybrid approach where we send everybody a postcard in the beginning of the calendar year and ask folks to get back to us and let us know if they prefer a mailed ballot or not? Then every election that we are in control of throughout that year, we would follow that guide. So as an example, last year, we did universal ballot mailing. And so everybody got the ballot for the first school vote, but then when we had to have a second school vote, we didn't have one. If that same situation were to happen in this new hybrid possibility, whoever asked for a ballot to be mailed would get it both times. But we wouldn't mail it to ever, absolutely everybody.
So I would request that it be, as a resident, I receive the postcard. I make my acknowledgement that I do want one at the beginning of the year. That will take care of any elections through the year. Through the year, though, through the rest of the year, we're not going to be asking again because I can also imagine somebody either, for whatever reason, they missed the first postcard.
Yeah.
And so later on in the year, if, if it's not acknowledged, I wonder if we're missing, missing it by not doing it sometime later. I can see it working and applying with the school vote, the school vote example, for instance, because of the way that that timing works. But I wonder if, you know, against that timing and then much later, you know, for a November vote, for instance, whether or not we wouldn't want to do another postcard later.
Yeah, we're not, we're not getting into it tonight either. But yeah, my fault, but, you know, different people paying for those two elections, too. Different entities paying for those two elections. So it's an interesting conversation that I hope they include us in before making a blanket decision. But yeah, okay. But it's great that they align. So we need, anybody have any feedback for this?
Well, we had decent turnout when we did the luncheon for the strategic planning process, right? That was like 11:30 to whatever.
Yeah, do you remember, I don't remember that exact timeframe. Ashley, do you remember the times?
Yeah, it was around lunchtime that we did it last time. So it was around, I think, we had started earlier for doing some ahead-of-time strategic planning efforts and then moved into the budget item, I think it was around 11:30 or 12.
And that was on a Saturday?
It was, yes.
And then when we did the community meal that one time in ADL, no, that was a dinner. That was a dinner. There was like 500 people there.
When was that?
It was before, right before COVID.
Okay.
It was January. And there was, it was no business being done. That was the thing. There was no business. We just had people come eat dinner.
Was that at the high school, actually?
At the high school. It was at the high school. That was an evening, but I don't remember if it was a weekday or a weeknight.
Yeah, boy, I just don't know which would, which would be more convenient for folks. I tend to think dinner. But it was well, it was well-attended. Amber, you had your hand up?
I was going to talk about the engagement piece, but while, I guess while we're talking about this, maybe what we do is we know how, we know what we got for attendance doing it at noon. Let's try, let's try an evening one this time around and see what we get for attendance.
And will we be able to have childcare?
That's something we can definitely approach with rec and see if that would be something they'd be willing to help out. Something that I've definitely put on my list.
Before we had to stop, before town meeting wasn't only an informational thing and it was always online, we would do it at the high school and the gym was full of children because EJRP brought, you know, brought folks in to watch them. So that would be a really good thing to do.
So I just want to be clear. We're talking about a Saturday evening? That's what.
See, I'd lean the other way that I thought earlier would be better because of the fact that it would be less disruptive on the weekend. But, I mean, personally, I'd rather do midday. But, I mean, this is also the first time in a while. So I don't, you know, I think that we, I think experience helps, but I don't know that experience will help dictate how this will work one way or the other. I think we have to go with what we.
Why don't we do it at lunchtime and tell everybody we're just going to have a big sandwich?
Forty-foot sandwich?
Yeah.
I, I would, I would personally lean towards, and I, just my opinion would be, if we're going to do it on a weekend day, that it would be the middle of the day just because there's always so much with small children in the morning and then you kind of can settle in and it's a little bit later, but still early enough that, you know, it's not disruptive to everybody's entire schedule during the day. And if we were going to talk about doing a community meal, then maybe it would be a different day of the week for an evening, you know, like an evening meal kind of thing. But at the same time, there's tremendous pressure on families to, that both work, that have to then get home and then, you know, to turn around and rush right out. And we have to be, you know, aware of those pressures as well. And I think while there's probably never an ideal situation, I personally feel like there's less disruption and more time to plan for like a Saturday, middle-of-the-day kind of thing. Just my two cents.
So I guess we're sort of settling on midday, that Saturday, for that.
And I don't disagree with the 40-foot sandwich. It sounds delicious.
I, I would offer up some virtual, you know, opportunities or availability in that January timeframe between the two meetings. I can, I, I don't. in that January timeframe between the two meetings. I can, I, I don't know if, if that's the time period that would be useful. And we still have another three or four weeks before we have to finalize it. I'm not sure what folks think is the more opportune time to, to be available and get feedback, whether it's in January between those two work sessions or, or between the, um, yeah, I just don't know.
Raj, if, if you're ready for it, but Steve is raising his hand over there.
Yeah, I was going to do public stuff after.
Okay, yeah.
Although everybody's telling me Steve's raising his hand.
When I speak as the moderator.
All right, all right, yes. I forgot about that part, yes.
Please come up.
As a moderator.
So, um, having moderated the meetings prior to the COVID and post, where we've gone from like business taking place to more informational and, um, and great to hear the 10 day to 30 day thing and all that. I thought it was a big difference last year in engagement to have the moderated meeting or a moderated meeting, the meal or midday Saturday before the budget was finalized. Cause people felt like even though they aren't making motions to move the budget around, I think people felt more like what they said was going to be considered versus the informational meeting where you can talk about it, but nothing can change necessarily, right? So I would advocate having scheduling your timing such that it's definitely, and I can't remember all the dates when everything was proposed, but to do it before the budget's finalized, because I think that increases the engagement and then, then you have the informational meeting as well on top of that. And I don't know if you, last year, I think both of them were moderated and I can do whatever if you want to do more.
Oh, I think, yeah, I think what I was saying before, so the, the one we just talked about with the meal is January 25th, a month in advance of what it's.
Perfect.
So that with the overall absolute intention of, we've done two meetings to work on it.
Yep.
We have two or three more to do, meetings available to us to work on it. Now's the time to get that feedback.
Okay.
So yes, what I was talking about were these like little micro hits where
Got it.
we're either doing a coffee chat or one of us is going to be, or two of us are available at lunch on new, on Zoom.
Sure.
Or, you know, we're at the senior center, which I would be happy to do, or we're, we're going to different places in the community to just, I guess we just spread them out throughout the whole process, but definitely.
Yeah. And I, I like the, I think it's great to have all those different opportunities. And then with the two, you know, bigger ones or whatever. Um, but is, but were you thinking two, just the two meetings to be moderated, the informational meeting and the, and the lunchtime gathering?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and that.
Is a budget discussion moderation? I mean, no, 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 I mean, you're great. No, no, I'm just, I'm just asking, I guess, out of process, I'm wondering.
So I can give you the process.
Yeah.
So in the past, so the informational meeting is supposed to be moderated. Okay. And if you're ever doing formal business where the citizens are making motions and all that, not the board, then that would be moderated. Um, moderators can be involved as needed beyond that. I think sometimes when you're dealing with something, like I got feedback that it was nice to have an independent person kind of leading the discussion. I mean, you all answered the questions, the staff and the board, but just sometimes people feel more comfortable if you're looking for engagement to have it, uh, someone not on the board leading the discussion. So, so that was my feedback, uh, that I got from some people and just kind of watching things play out.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Great perspective.
So one of the questions on, that they need an answer to, I think we answered the first one with the community meal is the informational hearing, March 17th, 19th, or March 21st, 24th, excuse me. Um, 17th is a Monday, 19th is a Wednesday, 24th is another Monday. Um, obviously 17th and 19th are closer to when the ballots go out. Um, potentially by the 24th, somebody could have voted, I suppose. Um, so do we have a preference on that? 19th is you, when we normally meet. Um, it's the third Wednesday of the month. So it would be typical for us, sort of on the schedule, I suppose. Um, it would sort of take a business meeting out of the, out of the loop. Um, should not be a bad thing, but.
Yep. Um, Ashley, just sorry confirmation, up above in the text, we limited that to the 17th or the 25th. All three are still down in the table. Is there a reason why we took the 19th off?
There is a, um, cultural holiday that is, um, a little, it ends, um, on the 19th. Um, and so there's been some conflicting. When I look at one group who has the cultural holiday, there's no restrictions. When I look in another group, there is some cultural restrictions. Um, so originally we had had those three dates on there. Uh, and then after Regina and I talked about this, um, we had decided to pull that off of the, the 19th, just to be on the safe side and be respectful of, um, that cultural holiday.
I apologize for that.
No, it, you don't need to apologize. We didn't, it's in, we didn't edit it correctly. So it's listed down below with the three options. So sorry about that. So really, we're looking at March 17th, which some may consider a holiday of sorts. Um, as an Irish Catholic, I'll say I don't, but, um, the, but certainly some people do. Um, the 24th would be the other option.
Or 25th.
Sorry, 25th.
Tuesday. I have kind of struck feelings over myself. It's early in the evening. It shouldn't conflict too much with St. Patrick's Day, but that's.
Well, after 10 a.m., I beg to differ.
Amber did have her hand up for a second there.
Sorry, I can't see everything. Sorry, Amber, we can't see you right now. I can now.
It's all good. No, I was, I was just going to throw my two cents in and say that my, my vote would be the 25th, um, just to not conflict with St. Patty's Day. Not that I want to celebrate it, but I want to, I want to try to get as many people to the meeting as we possibly can get. And I'm a little concerned if we do it on the 17th, that, that will impact it.
Should we just call it?
Yep.
Good.
Okay, March 25th.
Um, and those were the two questions you had outstanding, Ashley. And, um, I will say for myself that I appreciate what you've come up with so far. Um, with the schedule, now I can't see you, but, um, it's all right. It's complex here. Um, this is quite the schedule, um, to keep track of in terms of all the critical dates.
Can I ask a question, sir? Provide a little feedback. I, 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 again, I agree. I really do appreciate the schedule. I'm wondering though, as I, as I look through this though, if we're, and again, I'm not sure that this is easy. So I want to make sure that I'm, I'm being conscientious that, you know, what we're attempting to do here is not the easiest thing to do, that we do want to hit as many people as possible. We want to hit as many different people as possible. And we want to recognize or at least make sure that we're talking to various groups within the city to get that feedback. Um, so, you know, it's important, I think it's important to have that senior conversation and, you know, there are other groups as well. Um, but, uh, as I look through this, I'm not exactly sure what we might be missing. And I'm not, but this is one of those challenges that we're having right now, cause we've, we've said, and as we did recently with the strategic planning, um, that this community engagement was, was one of our pillars. It's very important. Um, but we're now in the middle of this work, so it's not like we can make every dream come true at the moment. So, um, I don't know. I don't know the best way to answer my, I'm not sure that I was verbalizing the question correctly. Do we feel like we're hitting enough of the various audiences in our city to make sure that we're getting representative feedback?
I think it's a, I think it's a great question. Um, I think we've had, um, you know, mixed success with these coffee chats. Those are probably the, sort of the easiest to pull together. And we have had some folks who do show up for those. So I think, um, some variety, variety of those are helpful. Um, but I do think we could probably do more. I know Ashley's got some other, um, ideas, cause she's been thinking on this today. Ashley, want to, any other thoughts you want to bring to the table?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm happy to. One of the things is, obviously I wanted to provide you guys with some opportunities that we've already done. Uh, but I also know that you all work and don't necessarily have just tons of time. So I wanted to be respectful of your time as well. Um, so some other options are, one of the, the groups that I feel like we, we miss a lot of times is parents and those who have young children. Um, so one of, a couple of my ideas to maybe reach out to some of those groups is obviously I'm always trying to meet people where they're at. Instead of having to ask people to come and participate in a meeting or participate in something that we're doing, we're asked, we're going to where they're at. Um, and so some of the ideas that I had and came up with today is maybe doing a Saturday in the park, um, having a small little tent in Maple Street Park where we have the opportunity for people to come up and talk to us. Maybe we have some candy to entice some children to come over. Um, and then really just have it being there to be an opportunity for people to come and talk to us about the budget and having some information to provide people about the budget. Um, also picking back off of maybe some Brannell, um, events, some of their more popular events, um, being there to be a part of the event, but also staying there a little bit before or after to kind of hit up some of those people as they're leaving or, um, as they're hanging out or waiting for their children, uh, to complete some of those activities that they're already coming for. Um, we're piggybacking off of that. Um, Raj, you kind of mentioned already doing something at lunch. So we could do some kind of mini lunch and learn where invite the, uh, community to come have lunch with us, bring your own. Um, and, uh, we talk about the budget and really can, uh, do some, uh, pointed more questions. I love the idea of just having feedback from people, but I'd also love to have some, uh, triggering questions. So if people had a specific question about the budget or how enterprises' funds work or how things work, um, we can have those kind of conversations that we're definitely going to talk on. Um, cause I feel like education is key and we kind of heard that a little bit from some of the, um, people who are interviewing for the committee, uh, member or positions tonight, um, and how we can better, um, engage our community. So those are just some of the top, things off the top of my head. Um, and I'm happy to schedule as much or as little as you guys have time for.
And I'll, I'll add is, um, if, if I could get a calendar representation of this, I think one, it'll help me personally, but I also think about visual learners, that it would really be a very assistive if they could at least see how we're engaging with the community on a topic like this in a visual fashion. And I think that would accomplish that. If, if that's not too much work, I don't, I don't want to all of a sudden, do this. No, that's not what I'm asking. If, if that, if that works, if that's possible, uh, that would be great. Thank you.
We can definitely do that.
Ashley, I love those ideas. Um, I, I think it's a, if you want to poll us on, I, I know it's, it's difficult for you, right? I imagine it's difficult because you don't know when to ask if we're available, if you haven't already reached out to see if you can do it wherever you're trying to do it. So understanding that, um, just hit us with whatever you've got. And if it works, it works within reason of your time. If it doesn't, it doesn't. I think, you know, Regina and I a couple of years ago went over to Whitcomb Woods, um, for another different topic, but it was really successful, actually. We, we had good conversation with, with people that will, so I'm, I'm open to finding those opportunities and we, it was like a dinnertime. We had dinner. It was good. Um, so, you know, yes, I really appreciate your considerations, but hit us with whatever. And if it, if it just falls through. The other things that we haven't talked about, you know, there's always the, um, town meeting TV interviews. There's the programs. There's the department head budget videos that were excellent last year and I'm sure will be excellent this year. Um, and, um, you know, I don't know if there's an opportunity for, um, this might be too early in our process for this year, but if there's an opportunity for Department One page, there's really interesting infographics or, or some simple way to say, you know, here's, here's the general fund. Here's kind of where it's going. Some of the graphs we always use, some of the highlights in different departments where there's significant changes. I think this year's budget is going to be fairly straightforward. Um, there aren't a lot of big surprises as far as I understand so far or anticipate. So I think communicating this, this year. The only other thing I'd suggest is something that somebody brought up to me was, is there ever any opportunity to partner with the school district on when they do their presentations or when they have their nights? Because after all, we're all paying both. So it's hard to take it in a disjointed fashion. So that was an interesting reminder from someone that, yeah, you know, I don't know how open they are to that. Theirs is way more complex to go through. Ours, by the time we got to us, everybody would be glassed over and in shell shock. Um, but I don't, I don't know if that's a realistic thing. Um, but somebody brought it up, so I thought I'd bring it up.
No, it's definitely something that I've thought about as well. Um, and again, it's, it is a more complex issue with, um, how their budget works. Um, so, but I did, uh, think we're, one of the things that we're going to add to the community meal this time is having our committees and our staff there. Um, and I thought I'd also put it out there to the school board or the school district and say, if you'd like to be there as a booth, um, to talk to people and to, um, talk about your budget, that would be great. We'd love to have you. So, um, that's definitely something in the back of my head as well.
Can I, I'll just add to that, cause that's a, that I really like the, the thought process and the idea around combining something with the school. I, I agree. I think that's a significant challenge if we were to like do an informational meeting with us both. But I kind of also think that it might work well with the, say the coffee chat, for instance, because one of us is going to draw on an audience, you know, that, that is a good way to potentially engage with more people.
Yeah, if they wanted to do that with us a couple of times.
Yeah.
You know, yeah, they might be the bigger draw this year, um, than ours potentially, you know, so. Going to go back to Zoom to see if Amber has a hand up or anything? No, good, okay.
So I don't recall a motion being needed for this, but.
Yeah, I don't think we need a motion.
Okay.
First year, first budget cycle.
Okay, that's all we needed, right, Ashley?
Okay.
That's all. If there's any other comments in the public or anything like that, I'm happy to, uh, entertain that as well.
So Steve, you've already offered input. Do you have anything, or Harlan? You've only got two other people in the room. Anything you want to add?
I think the discussion's great on gathering as much input as you can get in a variety of different ways.
Great.
Any way I can help, let me know.
Thank you. We definitely will.
Thank you.
Um, and we'll look to comment or input from folks online. Um, if you have any thing you'd like to share, any comments about this, please raise your hand or unmute if you're not able to raise your hand. And I'm not seeing any hands or anyone offering, so we will move on to six E, six D, excuse me.
Piece we pulled out here.
The memo from the consent agenda around the dog license fee increase.
So I asked to have this removed from the consent agenda. Um, I appreciate that Susan brought this to our attention, um, with the increase that, and what the state is now collecting. Um, I'd ask that we take a deeper dive on the fees that we are charging in light of the fact that we are seeing an increase in our animal control contracts, um, and also look at it in relation to what other surrounding communities are doing and bring it back to us. So table it for this week and bring it back for next week's, uh, meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Right. So I think I need a motion to table. Don't I? Do I need a motion?
Does that timeline work?
Yes, that worked, that works fine.
All second. Um, so we have a motion to table this item until next week. In a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Great, motion passes. I will take, entertain a motion for the group of consent agenda.
Some moved.
All right, one second.
Excellent. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes, numerously. Uh, council member comments and city manager report. Anybody in council have anything?
I don't have any particular items. There's just so much, but I don't have any particular.
There's just so much.
We'll catch up next.
She's now the manager of understatement.
Train hop Friday.
Go ahead.
Be there, be square.
Well played.
I do want to acknowledge Parks, uh, sorry, I want to acknowledge Public Works. I mean, uh, look, we've had our. look, we've had our most probably significant snow in, in the recent, recent couple of weeks, and, look, we know as city residents, you know, one of the nice things about our city is that we get these, these sidewalks plowed, and so we get more accessibility for our kids and ourselves to get to places around the city. This year, just like a couple of years ago, I had my lawn taken up a little bit, this kind of goes with, I, I feel like it goes with living here, but what I want to acknowledge, and the reason I bring it up, is because I can't think the Public Works enough for the responsiveness that they make, not to me, but to my neighbors. When things like this happen, they come right back out, they acknowledge it, and they resolve it for neighbors. I experienced it this year, I've seen it with neighbors of mine over the years, and really just can't, I really appreciate the professionalism and how they handle a situation, so thank you.
I, I want to take Amber's train hop and parlay that into the fire department, open house is Saturday from 10 to 2. It's a good chance to stop in and have a cookie from Quality Bake Shop and some hot apple cider, and see what your fire department's up to.
Oh, boy. And because Marcus is channeling it, the, the lights are up on Marcus and at the Maple Street Park, so thanks to Public Works for, for once again, going above and beyond with those lights there.
You reminded me, I did want to say something that's less fun, but we are gonna have to actually cut the power to our temporary office space on the senior center, so on Friday, December 20th, and Monday, December 23rd, we will not be able to accept any public incoming traffic, you can still get in touch with us, you can call, our voicemails get forwarded to our emails, we will get back in touch with you as best we can, but we will be open and operational, you just can't come in and see us. Because we will be open and operational in other locations, and then we are actually have two holidays, the 24th and 25th, so, just as a heads up, and we'll mention that again, if I remember, next week, and we're putting that out on the website and everything.
Okay. There are three executive sessions this evening, four? Four.
I have, um.
Go for it.
I have three here. I three, see three pages up.
So there's also a motion in the committee packet?
Oh, right. While you're finding that one, I'll do the first three. Or do we need to do them in order?
Yes, because Harland's joining us for the first one.
Oh, contract.
Page 67.
That's what I'm looking at. I move the city council to make the specific finding that premature disclosure of contractual matters would place the city at a substantial disadvantage, and I move the city council enter an executive session to discuss a contract pursuant to one VSA Section 313A1A to include the city manager, city council, and Harland Smith.
I'll second.
Great, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's passed unanimously. Second, I'll read. I move the city council to make the specific finding that premature disclosure of the confidential attorney-client communications would place the city at a substantial disadvantage, and I move the city council enter an executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communication regarding a public official pursuant to one VSA Section 313A1F and one VSA Section 313A3 to include the city council and city manager.
I'll second.
Great, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. And I move the city council enter an executive session to discuss personnel evaluation, quarterly check-in pursuant to one VSA Section 313A3 to include the city council and city manager.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously, and Marcus?
I make the motion, uh, oh, sorry. I'm, I move that the council move into executive session to discuss the appointment of public officials, wait, hold on, sorry.
You got it.
Is that it? Because I thought there was something else before that. Okay, I move that the city council enter to executive session to discuss the appointment of public officials pursuant to one VSA 313A3 to include the city manager.
Second. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 So we will be coming back out.
We will be coming back out.
To make appointments.
Right, and that is the rest of it, where we make specific motions for the specific appointments.
For research.
So we are in recess? All right, we're back, going to make a motion to appoint two members to the police community advisory board. I move that we appoint Jenny Parker to a three-year term, and David Harrington to a two-year term to the police community advisory board.
Second.
Great, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you to Jenny and David for being willing to serve. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye. Aye.
I need a second.
I'll give you that.
Elaine.
Oh.
I will second.
I, I moved.
Elaine moved.
No, Elaine did move.
Oh, you moved it?
I moved it, Marcus second.
Okay, sorry, Marcus second, and then I'll, we'll do the vote again, I, I got ahead of myself, I apologize.
I moved Marcus adjourn, uh, seconded. Got it.
Sorry, folks, it's late, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, we're adjourned, thanks all.
Thank you.